Call the meeting to order for legislative, Wacomico County Council Legislative Session 2019-02, January 15, 2019. Those who like to stand and join us for the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
My Father.
Lord have we, how be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, and bless the kingdom, the power and the glory forever, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from Council to approve Legislative Minister, January 2, 2019.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried and it's approved. Entertained a motion to approve the Special Legislative Minister from December 27, 2018.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the Open Work Session Minutes from December 18, in reference to the Council appointing to boards and commissions.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the Open Work Session Minutes from December 18, in reference to the Legislative Session, excuse me, Legislative Bill 2018-12.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Good morning, Mr. Taylor.
Good morning. I've got four things on my part of the agenda this morning. The first three are public hearings on pending bills, and the first of those is on Legislative Bill Number 2018-05, Amendment Two, which is an act to amend and transfer the appropriation from estimated contribution to fund balance account and the use of prior year funds balance account to solid waste enterprise fund, cell nine, construction project account in the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
This was introduced on the December 18 meeting by the President of the Council at the request of the County Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This time we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2018-05, Amendment Number Two. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this Legislative Bill, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Good morning. Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration. We're in receipt of a letter dated January 10. We received it yesterday from the President regarding this specific project. I would like to ask if we could keep the fund transfer and the reparations with GeoSynTech separate so that the project doesn't get delayed further. This project suffered some time delays to date, as well as the space at the current landfill is getting tight, so the sooner we can get this cell, new cell completed and able to start putting trash there, it will alleviate a major pressure issue at solid waste now. So I'd just ask if there's a way that we can get the fund transfer approved, and then we talk about where things went wrong with the bidding process and what brought us to this point. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill 2018-05, Amendment Number Two. Mr. Taylor?
Do you want me to respond to a question, or?
No, I thought we had, we have additional public hearings here.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you wanted to take any action, though, on this particular one first.
Well, I understand what Mr. Young has said today, but I think it's going to be a little more involved than just trying to make an amendment to the Legislative Bill at this time without having further discussion. I-
Let me ask Ms. Hurley, do you think we need a motion to table?
I don't think we need a motion to table. We can just move forward without voting at this time, if that's what Council desires to do.
Okay. I'll move on to number two, then. That's the second item. Second item for public hearing is Legislative Bill Number 2018-12, an act to provide in Chapter 77, titled Roads and Improvements, Article One, titled General Provision, Section 77-1, titled General Powers, that the Director of Public Works is authorized to install and maintain traffic control devices to the extent allowed by applicable law. This bill was introduced on November 20 by the Council President, and I might just add that the purpose of it is to conform the Personnel Manual provisions regarding deputy department heads to the Charter Amendment that was approved at the November election regarding-
Are you on the wrong one?
Am I?
Traffic control?
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me, I'm on the wrong line.
You're ahead of yourself.
Too much stuff here this morning, pardon me. Yeah, this one on the-
2018-12?
Yeah, 2018-12 is the one that we've discussed at work session most recently, and the discussion focused on whether there should be absolute control of traffic control devices by the Director of Public Works and/or any oversight either by the County Executive or by the County Executive and the County Council, or just the County Council. It was kicked around at the work session, there were various views, and I think the thing to do would be to decide how you want to proceed, and let me suggest language to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2018-12. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing for Legislative Bill 2018-12. Entertained a motion from Council to approve Legislative Bill 2018-12.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Taylor, you said you had a recommendation on this?
Well, I have a recommendation depending on how you want to, how you all want to address this topic, and right now, the pending bill provides for the authority of the Director of Public Works to handle the location of traffic control devices. My general research among other counties is that that tends to be the way that most of them do it, at least on the ones I've looked at, which is probably five or six, and I think there's a good reason for that, a couple of good reasons, actually. Number one is the fact that the location of traffic control devices is subject to state legislation and state regulations, even though we're talking about traffic control devices on county roads. So we still have to, as a county, still have to conform to those state regulations. The manual online, I just went in and looked at it just to see how complex and how lengthy it was, but at least the online version is 1,000 PDF pages. Now, it's not all about stop signs, but I mean, it's a, it's a complex, technical manual. That's number one. Number two is that there is an exception for governmental immunity for the maintenance design of county roads. You know, there's a general rule of governmental immunity for most things that the government does, but there's a longstanding in Maryland exception for public roads, and I think that signage and traffic control devices would also be subject to that exception. So I guess my thinking, and it's just my thinking, certainly not binding on you, is that why would the Council want to get into this matter? That number one is extremely complex because of the manual that I just mentioned, the state regulations, and number two, if you are in error in some way, you could be, the county this would be now, would be subject to suit and wouldn't have governmental immunity. It seems to me that the net of all of this would be to leave it with the Department of Public Works possibly subject to oversight by the County Executive.
Well, I don't think the Council was worried about establishing any local autonomy separate from the state of Maryland. I think all we were trying to do is just establish a concrete procedure within the county. That's my understanding.
No, no, and that's why it came up. The question came up during the summer about who regulates stop signs and where they're located in the county, and that's has brought us to where we are today.
Yeah, I think this was an attempt to clarify that.
Yeah.
Putting it with the Public Works Director, I think, is absolutely appropriate, and I don't think we need to get to meddle with what, with roads. I support it as written.
Any other comments from Council members? Seeing none, roll call vote. All those in favor of Legislative Bill 2018-12, we'll start with Councilman Hastings.
In favor.
Aye.
Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman?
In favor, aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Number 2018-12 has passed unanimously. Mr. Taylor?
This is the third item, the one I got a little, jumped the gun on. This is Legislative Bill Number 2018-13, an act to amend the Wacomico County Personnel Manual, Chapter One, titled Authority, Objective, and Scope, Section 0104, titled Scope, Chapter Six, titled Recruitment and Selection, Section 0615, titled Appointments, Chapter Eight, titled Probationary, Section 2701, pardon me, Probationary, Section 2701, regarding the employment relationship of deputy department directors shall continue to be in the merit system and following the Legislative Bill, and following the probationary period, pardon me, shall not be at-will employees. This, as I said before earlier when I jumped the gun, is intended to conform the Personnel Manual provisions regarding deputy department heads to the Charter Amendment that was passed at the November election regarding department, deputy department heads and their appointment. The confusion, I guess, or the need for clarification relates to the fact that now that deputy department heads are to be appointed, they would, without these changes, be subject to the at-will employment rules in the Personnel Manual, and the intention is that after the probationary period following their appointment, that they would not be at-will employees, they would be merit system employees, and that's what the bill was introduced, does.
Let me get to, at this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2018-13. Anyone that has any concerns in reference to this Legislative Bill, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. Entertained a motion from the Council to approve Legislative Bill 2018-13.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have an item. After this bill was introduced, we received from Mr. Wilber some suggestions that were made and some, I guess you would call it tweaking of the language, the main purpose being to make it absolutely clear that the deputy department heads would remain merit system employees after the probationary period. I don't think that the language changes which Ms. Hurley has prepared and passed out on a specimen new, new bill makes any substantive change, it just makes it clearer and I guess gives more comfort to the deputy department heads. I can go through those if you'd like me to, one by one. They could be either amended individually, if that's your pleasure, or they could be done as a group.
We have it at the table, and I think what we would need to have would be, first of all, would be a member of the Council to make, to propose an amendment, so we can get a second for discussion.
I'll make, I'll move that we amend the legislation in line with the recommendations by Mr. Wilber, as prepared by-
I'll second that.
We have a motion seconded, any discussion from Council on what's been put in front of you in reference to, I'd say, somewhat housekeeping matters, wouldn't you say, for amendment?
Yes, it appears to be just clarification, correct?
It is just for clarification. We can have Mr. Wilber come forward if you want to. That's, if you need additional information on the clarification, or we can go through it one by one.
I'm fine with it.
I'm okay with it.
I guess the, what would be the formal process for the statement of the amendment so that the record dictates exactly what has been prepared here?
Someone can make a motion that second one, the last three lines be amended to read, and then read what was typed on the EMI.
Mr. Kilmer, are you on?
You want to amend, you're amended.
There's a lot here.
Yeah. All right. So this would be Section One, the last three lines of Section One should be amended to read. This is the quote, "are hereby amended with as follows," inserted, "to clarify that deputy director shall continue to be in the merit system," and "following" is deleted, "after" is inserted, "the probationary period," and then inserted is "following appointment," and then deleted is "shall not be at-will employees as follows." In Chapter 27, in the definition for appointed positions, in there, after, when it says position staff throughout well employment relationship, add "provided, however, that deputy department directors are," and delete "not at-will," and insert "merit employees except during the probationary period following appointment," then delete the line that says "employees in appointed positions serve at the pleasure and discretion of the appointed official." The definition for appointed employees should be amended as follows. An employee hired, and then inserted, or promoted to an appointed position, and who serves at the will and pleasure of the appointed official, and then insert "including deputy department directors," and delete "heads," and then insert "during the probationary period but not thereafter." And then for the definition of termination at-will in that section, there in the second line, employees on their initial probationary period and appointed employees are not, delete "at-will," insert "merit employees," then insert "provided, however, that deputy department directors are merit employees after the initial at-will probationary period following appointment." And that is the extent of the amendment.
Thank you very much, Councilman Kilmer.
That makes sense to everybody.
Any other, any other discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Legislative Bill 2018-13 has been amended. Any other questions, concerns, discussion, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Legislative Bill 2018-13 as amended?
It's 2018 dash, yes, sorry.
As amended, say aye. We'll begin with Councilman McCain.
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman Hastings?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Number 2018-13 as amended has been approved. Thank you, Councilman Kilmer, for working us through that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Taylor?
The fourth and last item is Legislative Bill Number 2018-05, Amendment One, an act to amend and transfer the appropriation from use of prior year funds account to the transfer to others account in the amount of $254,758.15 in the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019.
Entertained a motion from Council to approve Legislative Bill 2018-05, Amendment Number One.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. We'll start with Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman McCain?
Aye.
And Chair votes nay. Legislative Bill Number 2018-05, Amendment Number One passes. Mrs. Hurley? Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Good morning, Councilmembers, Council President, ladies and gentlemen. This morning, we're doing some cross-training in the Council Office, so, Mr. President, with your permission, I'll read Agenda Item Number One, and then we'll have Lynn Sandy read the remaining Agenda items.
Thank you.
So the first item we have on the agenda is audit presentation by Ashley Stern, Mike Kleger, and Ryan Taylor with Paykron Stern.
You guys can take all day, because we're 40 minutes ahead of schedule.
Thank you.
I probably could talk all day.
Ignore that comment.
We only have 147 pages to go through.
Just read it.
If you could each state your name and, of course, your position, that'd be great for the public.
Good morning. My name is Mike Kleger and partner with PKS and Company.
Ashley Stern, I'm a manager with PKS and Company.
Ryan Taylor, I'm a senior accountant with PKS and Company.
Good to have you all.
Thank you for everybody's. You should have, hopefully, had received a copy of the draft financial statements prior to the meeting today, and we've also previously delivered and reviewed the draft statements with management as well as the finance department. So our purpose today is to kind of present an overview of the audit results, mention some key highlights, and then, of course, answer any questions you might have for us today. I'd like to begin with the audit report itself, which is in the large bound financial statements, and I know some of you have some PDF copies, so the page numbers may not exactly match up, but, and the bound reports, since pages one through three is the audit report. On page one and the top of page two covers management's responsibilities for the financial statements, which is basically the preparation and the presentation of those statements. Contrary to popular belief, these are not PKS's statements or financial statements of the counties. Our responsibility as auditors is to audit those financial statements and issue an opinion on those statements. The opinion paragraph is the middle paragraph of page two, and I'm happy to report that our opinion on the county's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2018 is unmodified. This is also referred to as a clean opinion and is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as auditors. An unmodified opinion means that the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the county in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We did add an additional paragraph this year. The next paragraph you'll see it says "change in accounting principle." This relates to governmental-
Make sure both, everybody on the same page?
Page two of the audit, okay. We did add a paragraph this year, which was not there last year. This is a change in accounting principle related to Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75, which deals with accounting and note disclosures related to post-employment benefits other than pensions, which essentially is your health insurance plan. And we'll discuss the impact of this new standard on the statements later, but I do want to mention, we wanted to specifically mention that there had been an accounting change.
For, so everyone can follow this, page two on the audit, but it's page 57 in the brief book. It's PDF page 57 in the brief book, if you're looking on the, on your tablet.
All right, and the next report is on pages four and five, directly behind the audit report. This is a report on internal controls and compliance matters. Unlike the audit report, this is not an opinion paragraph on internal controls or compliance matters, but basically is a report on any findings or weaknesses we noted during our audit testing. Again, I'm happy to report that we did not identify any internal control or compliance matters as a result of this year's testings. We did issue a separate management letter, an auditor's communications report, but they did not rise to the level of significant deficiencies, so, and then we'll comment on those later as well. So that's the two types of reports that are in here that are related, or came from PKS, and I'm going to turn it over to Ashley to kind of mention some of the key highlights, and then we'll go through some of the questions and answers at this point. Ashley?
Thank you, Mike. I'm actually going to focus on the green copy that you received with the green writing. I summarized some financial highlights so that you didn't have to flip through the 140-something pages of the financial statements in front of you. I'm going, there are some references in there to pages within the financial statements, so if you're later looking through this, you can take a look back and actually see the pages within the financial statements that it refers to. Actually, before we get into anything, I'm going to touch a little bit more on that GASB-75 that was released this year for other post-employment benefits that Mike touched on a little earlier, especially with it being such a new statement, we wanted to make sure to give some background and some detail on it. This was implemented during this year. It's very similar to GASB-68, if you remember back a few years, that dealt with pensions. This is actually the way the Government Accounting Standards Board has addressed the other post-employment benefit liability or your OPEB plan. First, they released GASB-74, which actually changed the way the actuary looks at your other post-employment benefits and values that liability. And then subsequently, in this year, GASB-75 was released in order to change the way the valuation is included on the county financial statements. Additional disclosures are required, so that's why you're actually seeing 11 more pages within your financial statements this year, so if it's feeling a little bit heavier, that's why. And there's also some additional footnotes and supplementary information related to these items. Those can be found on page 98 and starting on page 124 of the financial statements. This change actually only affects your government-wide financial statements, so it doesn't affect your fund statements, it doesn't affect the business-type activities, just your government-wide In addition to that change to the GASB-75, there's one more note that I wanted to make in connection with the OPEB plan. There was also a change in assumptions that was implemented this year, and that's actually a plan change for the recommendation to take Medicare first and then to use the county health insurance plan as supplement. That's actually $11.6 million in decreased expenses that the county will realize over the next seven years. The requirement is, instead of recognizing that decrease in expenses in the first year, it gets recognized over the remaining seven, so you have six more years of recognizing a decrease in your expenses related to the OPEB plan. Some key financial highlights for the government-wide financial statements, these start on page 17. These include both your governmental and your business-type or enterprise fund activities. It also includes your two component units, the Board of Education and the Wacomico County Free Library. Just as a note, your business-type activities do include the nursing home, which is also audited by another accounting firm. The primary government is what we tend to focus on, and that's your governmental activities and your business type. Some key things to note in changes with, if you're looking at 2017 versus 2018 for these numbers, your deferred inflows and outflows have changed. These were implemented a few years ago to bring clarity to the statements. These are not considered assets or liabilities, they're more future expenses or future decreases in expenses. So those, you do see some new deferred inflows and outflows related to the GASB-75. Your unrestricted net position totals $23.77 million, or 20% of your total net position, whereas you actually have a restricted net position totaling $29 million, and that's mostly due to timing. So timing of when expenses are paid versus what the purpose of those expenses or revenues are, and that is, that is why we consider it a restricted net position, but should be looked at in a, in connection with your unrestricted net position. Some key highlights on your general fund, we actually saw an unassigned fund balance remaining strong this year of 32, a little over 32 million, which is actually 58.32% of your total fund balance. Some other key notes about the general fund before I get into some of your budget and actual, I included some numbers in comparison from previous years. Those are going to refer to the next couple of slides where we actually do a five-year comparison. I think it's a lot easier to look at things from year to year as opposed to just saying, this is what happened this year. There was a decrease in the fund balance of the general fund by 4.6 million, and this is due to budgeted transfers for capital funding. So nothing that we believe that is concerning, this is the first time in quite a few years that we've had a decrease, but these are councils budgeted, the executive and the council approved budgeted decreases that were transfers to other funds, so not money going outside of the county. Some key notes about your budget to actual expenditures and revenues, we saw actual revenues were $2.28 million greater than the budgeted amount, that's 1.6% difference from the budget, and actual expenditures were actually $4.32 million less than the budgeted amount, and that's 3.6% close to the budget. Looking at some general fund revenues over the past five years, you can see a small decrease in your property taxes in 2018, that's due to the rate decrease, and so that was expected and very close to what was actually budgeted for property taxes. Income taxes were $300,000 less than 2017, and that's actually what we're kind of seeing in quite a few other towns or other counties, so pretty consistent across- of seeing in quite a few other towns or other counties, so pretty consistent across the state. But it's actually, it can be from year to year. As a heads-up going forward, you'll actually see your first decrease in the payment from the state of Maryland for income taxes in 2019 for that Wynn case, if you remember, where the state of Maryland is actually, it's eight-hundred-thousand dollars that they're going to reduce county payments for previous tax return amendments. And then other revenues were slightly down from 2017.
And I guess the eighteen is lower simply because seventeen was an exceptionally
Good year.
Strong year.
Right.
It's not as if there's a downward trend for the county as a whole.
No, we don't see that, no.
And a lot of that can be due to timing of tax returns with the county's fiscal year-end of being June 30th and when the state of Maryland makes payments first when returns are filed. Taking a look at the general fund expenditures by type, we actually split these out into four different types that we thought would be beneficial for the council. We have our salaries, other operating, debt service, and the Board of Education. Just as a note, the Board of Education does not include any bond interest or principal payments that are on behalf of the Board of Ed. This is just the payment to the Board of Ed on behalf of the county. There was an increase in your debt service this year. That's due to the new bonds that have been issued, so you have an increase for that, as well as an increase in your Board of Education payment by a little under two million. I actually have the totals for what was paid on behalf of the Board of Ed, including the debt, principal, and interest. That was eleven million dollars and seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for 2018, just for your reference. Taking a look at the kind of big pie chart of the county expenditures, we split this into some different departments to see exactly what the percentages were per department. The education expenditures, and this includes also the library, the community college expenditures are thirty-four percent of the total expenditures for the county, falling slightly behind. Education, we have public safety at fourteen percent, detention center at eleven percent, and debt service at right about ten percent.
Your color codes are very close.
Are they? Sorry about that. I tried to keep a green theme. Taking a look at the fund balance of the general fund, I think this is really important to understand the health of the county. So when we're talking about how the county has done over the past five years or the health of the general fund, the GFOA actually recommends that the undesignated or unassigned fund balance be three, two to three months of operating expenditures, and that's something we take a look at when we're looking at the general fund to ensure.
That's kind of a minimum reference, by the way, so.
And we've taken a look at that with the executive and the county as well within that minimum recommendation. So the unassigned or fund balance is thirty-two million, as I mentioned previously, and the remainder of the fund balances, which include your non-spendable, committed, assigned, and restricted portions, is right about twenty-three million dollars. I'm going to go, we decided that we were going to take a look at some enterprise funds. These are the ones that we thought would be important for the council to take a look at or to see a five-year trend. We selected solid waste, airport, and the civic center to look over a five-year trend. I'm actually going to go over a few things within that five-year trend. Taking a look at solid waste first, as you can see, revenues are slightly down from 2018. That is due to the tonnage of being disposed of in the solid waste. New inventory controls were actually implemented during the year. As a positive note, I know we had spoken to the council last year about some of the solid waste and roads inventory, so I'm happy to say that those were all implemented during the year as well, so we have a positive note there. Taking a look at the operating income or loss for solid waste, if you note back in 2014, we actually had seen a loss, but over the past few years we've seen a positive operating income, although it's slightly down from 2017 due to certain expenses that have come up during the year as well as that small decrease in revenues I mentioned, we're actually seeing a good positive trend with the solid waste financials. Taking a look at the airport, revenues actually increased from 2017 by a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, and then expenses increased by right about six-hundred-thousand dollars, and that's due to improvements that are taking place at the airport. We've seen an increase in the airport depreciation as well, and if you remember back in 2016, we saw a lot of grant income for capital improvements. So now you're seeing the expense or the depreciation from those capital improvements from years ago. So 2016 is a little bit of a different number one, looking at the five-year trend.
Is that just straight line, Ashley, or is that accelerated at all?
It's straight line. This year we saw for the airport a change in net position of three-point-three million dollars of a decrease. Taking a look at the civic center five-year trend, we've seen revenues stay stable from this year and last year, similar to operating expenses have stayed stable from 2017 to 2018. The big difference between the change in net position from 2017 to 2018 was actually those transfers that I mentioned earlier in the presentation to the civic center for capital improvements, and you'll actually, just like the airport, will see that depreciation over the next couple of years.
I have a question. And I don't know if this is in your territory or not, but how does the county, as a government, decide whether to continue to maintain different departments as enterprise accounts as opposed to then wrapping them into the standard department status?
So we actually took a look at the civic center this past year with administration, and I've spoken to the finance department about this, and are actually looking to move the civic center from being an enterprise fund in 2019 to being actually what's considered a special revenue fund, which would be a governmental fund. We typically look at a three-year, three- or five-year trend to see what the operating income or loss is, because what you're wanting to look at is what the intention of the fund or the intention of the revenue is. So if they're budgeting for every year that, hey, we're going to be able to completely support ourselves every year, then we can testify that it is an enterprise fund. But if they're budgeting for a county appropriation or help from the county, then it tends to be moved over to a special revenue fund. So the finance department is actually working on that now, so you will see that in your 2019 statement.
So Ashley, you are saying that PKS made that recommendation?
Correct, correct. So we've made that recommendation for 2019, and I actually have a meeting later this month with the finance department to kind of go over the logistics and to go over that. I've also talked with Pam Olin over at the civic center about this. So instead of continuing to take a look back at 2018, I know we're part of the way through 2019, so let's take a look forward at what the county's going to be experiencing for the next couple of years and what will affect you down the road. So while you're making your decisions, please keep these accounting standards and procurement standards in mind. The first thing that I wanted to go over is our new uniform guidance procurement standards. This actually is effective right now. So we've been working with Nick over in the purchasing department on these new procurement standards, and these are for federal funds only. So when I'm talking about the new thresholds, these don't govern all expenditures of the county. They would govern your expenditures related to any federal grants only. The uniform guidance is requiring conflict of interest statements for any person involved in federal funds or the dispersment of federal funds during a selection period. So if there's a bid process going on, we've made the suggestion that everyone involved gets their conflict of interest statement signed and keeps them on record. There's also new procurement thresholds related to what's required. The county's thresholds are actually more strict than what the federal government is recommending, but we like to keep these in mind just in case. We never want to see any type of de-obligation of funds due to these. And we'll be testing these during your 2019 audit as well. Coming down the road for your June 30th, 2020 audit, I know that seems like far away, but I know you're getting ready to start on that budget right now. We have a new Gatsby Statement Number Eighty-four, which is affecting your fiduciary activities. This is actually redefining what it's meant, what's to be reported as fiduciary, and it will bring changes to the county financial statements. Those will be effective for your 2020 statements, so you'll see a little bit of a modification there. The biggest Government Accounting Standards Statement coming down the road is actually Gatsby Number Eighty-seven leases, and this will have a major effect on the county's financial statements. This is effective for your June 2021 financial statements. It requires the recognition of certain lease assets and lease liabilities previously classified as operating leases. Instead of having any operating leases, for example, copiers or cars, they are now actually going to all be considered somewhat like capital leases, so you'll see a lease asset as well as a lease liability related to all operating leases, which is a major change coming down the road.
Yeah, previously that one just kind of showed up in the footnote as a disclosure item, so now they're just taking that and putting it on the face of the financial statements directly.
So I went over some highlights. If council has any questions, we're happy to take any now, or if you want to take a deeper look into the presentation slides or the statements, we're happy to come back and do a work session or anything that the council would recommend.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I think you were very thorough and did a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I just had one question on page ninety-eight.
Page ninety-eight, did you say, Mark?
Yeah, the hard copy. Talk about the deferred compensation plan. Could you talk about that a little bit? What is that plan? Is that the drop plan?
So the drop plan is actually included within your pension plan.
Yeah.
So this is the 457 plan, so it's a little bit different than the pension, but...
Okay, all right. Yeah, that was my question, if that was the drop plan or not.
That's what the employee puts aside.
Mark, the drop plan, you can actually see the details starting on page seventy-two.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just wondering if it was two discussions.
It's a two different, two different issues.
Any questions? I think what we will do is we'll simply take you up on your offer for a work session, because I doubt the council as a whole has had a lot of time to review this.
Yeah, we thought you might need more time.
It takes a while to get through it.
They're extensive.
Sure. So I will do that and plan for a work session sometime in the near future.
Sure.
We appreciate your time.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Thirty-two, 2019, to make an appropriation of funds to the sheriff's office from unanticipated revenue in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. The sheriff's office has received unanticipated revenue from the state of Maryland for sex-offending monitoring, revenue from the sale of property and equipment through Pete Richardson auction sales, and revenue from the local government insurance trust for the total loss of a vehicle. The sheriff's office is seeking acceptance of the unanticipated revenue and the appropriation to various accounts in the sheriff's office budget. And Todd Richardson, there he is.
Yep.
Captain Richardson is here if there's any questions.
I obtained a motion from council to approve Resolution Thirty-two, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Good morning, Captain.
Good morning.
Good to have you here.
Captain Todd Richardson with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
You've always said this is the highlight of your day.
It always is.
Meeting with us?
Yes.
Questions from council?
One question. Were the appropriations to the account of capital vehicle, was that to purchase another vehicle?
Yes, sir. That was for a total loss of a 2015 Charger, and at the time of the loss, the car was less than two years old, therefore legit pays the full replacement value, so we will have that dropped into our capital account for cars and replace that car.
That was involved in an accident.
I heard about that.
No, it was. No, I said this car was involved in an accident. Deputy, okay?
Yes, everything worked out fine. Other Dodge Chargers, when they take a hit on the front end, it's generally a total loss.
Heard they didn't fare well.
Yes.
Any other questions? I think the only thing that we had talked about, I believe, earlier is the way that these come down, the revenues.
Yeah, you're talking about the forfeitures?
The forfeitures coming from the court system.
And I went back and I looked through them, and we have one offending judge that I will ask to meet with and a couple of...
Who is that judge?
And a couple visiting judges, and it's just a matter of me educating the state's attorneys to make sure they say sheriff's office rather than Wycomico County, though I know Wycomico County isn't in the business of forfeiting funds as a county entity like the sheriff is. But that's a matter which, when they come in, if I notice that they're, they say Wycomico County instead of sheriff's office, I can simply ask the state's attorney to have it adjusted and take care of that.
But I think it's the other way around, because it's supposed to be forfeited to the county unit, I thought, not the sheriff's office. I thought that's what state law was. I mean, and that's something that is not going to hold this up. I mean, it's just, we've talked about it in the past, and I think we're trying to figure out what that is, and that's not, that's not on your end.
I know the state has just put, effective last year, we do all kinds of reporting on all forfeitures. I basically report each forfeiture as it comes into the state on a website, and at the end of the year, we tell them what was forfeited, what was returned, what's still within the court system. But I'll get that ironed out and make sure it's consistent.
We can, yeah, okay, great. We can help you with it too. I mean, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Wilber could look at the statute.
I think it's more making sure the state's attorney that's in the courtroom that day is in sync with the judge.
Sure. Any other questions from council? All those in favor of Resolution Thirty-two, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much, Captain.
Okay, the next item is Resolution Number Thirty-three, 2019, authorizing Geocraft Incorporated as a sole-source vendor for the replacement and/or repair of doors at the Wycomico County Detention Center, and to waive the formal competitive bidding process for the replacement and repair of said doors during fiscal year 2019. And we have Ruth Colburn, Director of Department of Corrections, and Mr. Nick Rice, purchasing agent here, if there's any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution Thirty-three dash 2019.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You need to state your name for the public, so.
Ruth Colburn, Warden.
Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent.
Can you explain why Geocraft will be the sole vendor and you're waiving the bid process?
Because I've reached out to other vendors, and they just don't want to travel to the eastern shore to take a look at the work. Geocraft does. They don't want to come here.
And we've looked to see, as we said, there's a couple other examples, you know, Caroline County, as well as a bunch of other in the areas that use Geocraft for these services.
So how long will this process go on as them being the sole vendor?
We're currently doing these each fiscal year, so it would be for this fiscal year, and if we wanted to do it again next fiscal year, we'd have to come in front of you again.
So next year you'll make the same request?
Yes, sir. Yeah, no, I'm not, I don't get married to vendors.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Thirty-three dash two thousand nineteen, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
For the supermajority. Thank you very much for coming.
Have a good one.
Thanks.
All right, and next on the agenda is the submission of appointments to the Wycomico County Local Management Board, the Wycomico County Board of Electrical Examiners, the appointment of the Director of Administration, and the Assistant Director of Administration. In accordance with Section 315(a) and (b) of the Charter, the county executive is to submit appointments to boards and commissions, as well as the appointment of the Director of Administration and Deputy Director of Administration, to council for confirmation at a legislative session. The Director of Administration has formally submitted nominees to the Wycomico County Local Management Board, the Board of Electrical Examiners, the Director of Administration position, and Assistant Director of Administration position for confirmation. So starting with Resolution Thirty-four, 2019, confirming the appointment of Minister George Mandell Copeland to the Wycomico County Local Management Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty-four, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Minister Copeland, we appreciate your volunteering. I think this is the second one we've done in the last month, right? We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, and next is Resolution Thirty-five, 2019, confirming the appointment of Sarah Walling to the Wycomico... of Sarah Walling to the Wycomico County Local Management Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution number thirty-five, two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Second.
No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution number thirty-six, two thousand nineteen, confirming the reappointment of Brett Callaway to the Wycomico County Board of Electrical Examiners. The Board of Electrical Examiners is responsible for administering the provisions of Chapter one thirty-eight of the county code pertaining to electrical standards.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution thirty-six, two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, and the next item is Resolution number thirty-seven, two thousand nineteen, confirming the reappointment of R. Wayne Strasburg as Director of Administration.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution thirty-seven, two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seen on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, and then the last item is Resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand nineteen, confirming the appointment of Weston S. Young as the Assistant Director of Administration.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution thirty-eight, two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you. I'd like to thank again all those who have volunteered to serve on the committees and the commission. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Strasburg and Mr. Young. You guys are doing a fantastic job, and the council really appreciates all your work.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Roser, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, thank you very much. I'd like to call your attention to Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand nineteen, concerning the Internal Auditor's annual report.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution thirty-nine dash two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Roser?
If I may.
Thank you.
The Office of the Internal Auditor for Wycomico County would like to submit a progress report for my eighth year in office. Your internal auditor would like to thank the county council once again for the opportunity to serve Wycomico County in this capacity. I would also like to thank county executive Bob Culver, council administrator Laura Hurley, the Wycomico County Audit Committee for their invaluable support during the past year. Additional thanks go to our Assistant Internal Auditor Levin Hitchens, department heads, county accounting professionals, and all other associates within the county and the state of Maryland who have been so supportive in their interest and openness when it comes to addressing various county issues. Any success we enjoy as auditor and audit committee is directly attributable to the people who make Wycomico County succeed. Everything we do is designed to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of Wycomico County. We completed thirteen projects in the past year, including a fuel inventory, purchase cards, and a budget review. Scope and objectives for audits underway in other planned projects can be found in the FY two thousand nineteen annual audit plan. Many of our completed projects require follow-up. Subsequent work on many of these audits is just as important and time-consuming as the audit itself. We performed additional work on numerous completed projects. This office assisted in requests for assistance, along with several investigations involving various factions of the county on a variety of subjects. Additionally, we completed numerous reports and projects for the benefit of the Office of the Internal Auditor, county council, and the county executive. The Office of the Internal Auditor would like to thank all those who participated in the various projects undertaken. The quality of relationships previously developed with council, senior management, and county associates in the spirit of cooperation for the betterment of Wycomico County and an effort to improve efficiency and effectiveness was further developed to everyone's benefit. And once again, I hope that all stakeholders review the small contribution this office made in the past year favorably. Respectfully submitted, Steve Roser, CPA, Internal Auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. Any council comments, questions?
I'd like to thank Mr. Roser for his hard work and being so diligent with the county.
Thank you, Councilman Doc.
You had mentioned the additional work. You certainly have taken on a lot of additional work, and we appreciate it because it's been a big help for us, and you managed to stay on target with your existing programs that you're responsible for. So you definitely have expanded your role, and we do appreciate that. We consider that invaluable. And Levin is doing a great job. We're very glad we brought Levin in as well. That's your recommendation. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next, I'd like to call your attention to Resolution number forty, two thousand nineteen, concerning the Department of Corrections inmate fiduciary accounts. And with your permission, Levin Hitchens did most of the testing on this. I'd like to call him up to do the presentation, if I may.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Levin Hitchens, Assistant Internal Auditor.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution forty, two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, thank you.
We've performed an audit on the fiduciary accounts of the Department of Corrections. As fiduciary accounts, of course, it is not the county's money, but we are responsible for safekeeping. Currently, there are four accounts over at the DOC. Two are for inmates, one is a population, and one that manages individual inmate balances for commissary and things like that. Another is for correctional staff, for holiday parties and other things to boost morale. And the last are work release payments that inmates pay to the fund that then get transferred to the county. A new employee did start as an accountant over there, right around the time that we started the audit, so it was very good timing. Everything was in orders, we didn't find anything out of place in QuickBooks. We analyzed an entire year of transactions for each account. We did offer seven suggestions to management to help internal controls and compliance. I'm going to highlight three of them here. The first is regarding county purchase cards. The DOC had an agreement with Finance that they could use purchase cards, and then the inmate welfare account would then reimburse the county for those expenses. We did analyze all the inflows and outflows of that, and we didn't find any issues. However, as a good practice, we recommend that they don't use county purchase cards on a fiduciary account. It's not really within policy. The second highlight would be submissions to the Finance Department. Historically, they were submitting reports monthly. We found that they were about six months behind at one point in time. We recommend that they work with Finance to get back on a schedule that works for both of them, so that Finance can keep good timing with all their duties, as well as just help with oversight.
Levin, was that in the result of the fact they had a new person come on board for accounting, or was that going on before that?
That was going on before that.
Before that.
The last is bank reconciliations. The accountant has check signing privileges, and the accountant was also responsible for doing reconciliations. So we recommend either they give up check signing privileges or delegate the bank reconciliations to another staff member who does, cannot sign checks. Further, we noticed that all the statements that we originally got did not have check images. We did get statements that had check images during our audit, but we recommend that they have routine statements come from the bank with check images included. We do plan to follow up in March to see where they're at with all the findings and recommendations, and we'd like to thank the management and staff at Corrections, they were extremely helpful and candid. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
I see that some of this in reference to management responses, where they were saying two positions were vacant for six months, but everything's now current and dated. With regard to the community corrections in reference to policy and procedures for bad debts, you said the community corrections was sending the accounts to the law office of the county. I was curious as to if we've had any response in reference to that.
No, as of the report date, we had not gotten a response. Now, that was, again, the accountant there had just started, so he was still trying to figure out what all the policies were and what had been done. Of course, we know that we don't have a law office, our law department, so he was not sure if they were being sent to our external law office or not. But within the past year or so, we had not gotten any bad debt payments collected. So I would assume they were not being done.
So when you follow up on this, Levin, because there were a lot of, you know, comments made and a lot of management comments made, will you be working through the, directly with management there? Are you going to, is this sort of, does this have to be a coordinated effort with the executive branch as well?
It is coordinated with the executive branch, but we go directly to the Department of Corrections right on site and work with them. That's how we find, we met with them probably three or four times over at Department of Corrections, working directly in their office to see how everything flowed. We got access to QuickBooks, QuickBook backups, and looked firsthand at all of their data, and that's what we'll be doing for the follow-up as well.
Okay. One thing I didn't understand, this is just from my personal information, the work release account, what exactly is that process? I wasn't familiar with that.
The, from my understanding, the inmates that are participating in work release then have to pay fees to the DOC to help subsidize their stay there, and then that, those payments that they make then get transferred to the county's general fund.
Okay. You got it right? Any other questions? Seen on, all those in favor of Resolution forty, two thousand nineteen, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much, Levin.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roser. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concern.
My name is Dr. Derry Mason, and I'm a resident of Wycomico County. And my concern is, as I looked over the budget proposal that was online, and I guess looking at the Wycomico nursing home budget for the revenues generated for two thousand eighteen, and then the nursing home expenditures are equal. So then I looked at the projected description of some general service needed for the nursing home, and it says that, of course, we know we've been having problems with the heating and air conditioning for some time, there's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar funding for that project. So I assume that there is no funds left in the two thousand eighteen budget? And what can I say? So I guess this is why the decision is made that you're looking at someone taking over the nursing home because of the updating of that unit replacement? So, being that the auditor said they didn't handle the nursing home audit, I would like to request a copy of the budget for the nursing home for our income and expenditures, because we need to take a serious look at where is this eight million, eight million eight hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars going almost annually, and yet the revenue is the same amount? So if I was in charge of an agency like the nursing home, there would be maintenance in the budget as well, so I want to see myself personally and people who are, have interest in keeping the nursing home open, where is that money going? So I would like to see a copy of the operating, annual operating budget. And a lot of you were here the last time we met, and the gentleman said that there were policies and procedures required by the state health department, which I guess he's saying that we are not capable as a county to perform those duties. So I would like to request a copy of the policies and procedures, because I know the state health department wouldn't allow the nursing home to continue to be open if we weren't following those guidelines. Also, I talked with the manager, the current active manager of the facilities, and to me, she's not qualified. So I would like to see her qualifications, or the qualifications for that position, as well as her resume that she submitted to say that she is qualified, or was it just a favorite person that someone liked and appointed her to that position? Also, I would like to see a copy of how the property was transferred from Phi Delta Capital to Beta Tau Chapter in nineteen sixty-six to a nonprofit corporation, and then to the county in nineteen seventy-two. With that, there should be a record somewhere, and it seems that no one that I've asked has a record of the transaction. And last but not least, I would like a listing of all the employees and their positions, because it seems to be an imbalance there of diversity, as I want to put it. And I feel free to take any questions from you that I might can answer. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Mason, I would suggest if you talk to, get together with Mr. Strasburg.
Okay.
He can give you a breakdown of, and I'm most assuredly can answer your questions and get you the information that you need.
Okay.
We appreciate you sending the email earlier, we did get that, and we'll continue to give you whatever you need to help clarify it for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the interest. Good morning.
I returned this time with my voice intact. It's a new year, and I'm so pleased to see how well the county was doing with the auditor that gave her report. It gives us such a bright future with a thirty-two million dollar fund and then the restricted fund of twenty-three million dollars. I want to add to what Dr. Mason had to say. Since we're in such a fine place to be for Wycomico County, I too, in her request, want to add the transfer of funds that was from Wycomico Nursing Home to wherever it went to. I've tried to get information on that and could not. So if those funds can be transferred back, and I am talking about the million-plus dollars, and I know the last time I was here that you all advised me that it was not during your tenure, but it's still your responsibility for the people, for Wycomico Nursing Home, for our community, and for the county. If someone in the request, Mrs. Strasburg, when you give that to Jerry, if you can also add that point in, when can we get our million dollars back? Thank you.
Can you give your name for the record?
Katrina, K-A-T-R-I-N-A Purnell, P-U-R-N-E-L-L.
Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
Mr. Kanna, or Mr. Strasburg, do we know when the audit, because that's a different auditor that does the nursing home, when the, when will, the next one will be presented and regarding that, do we know?
They're on a fiscal year as well, and we have the June thirty eighteen audit, and so I can get copies of that to you. And it was a clean audit. With regard to, Dr. Mason, with regard to the heating and air conditioning units, the replacement of all these units was included in this year's budget, and that project is going to take place. So all the, they're called PTAC units, so each one of the units and each one of the rooms is going to be replaced, and that has been funded. You had another question, and I'm drawing a blank on what it was, but I...
The administrator's qualifications.
Oh, the administrator's qualifications, under state law, if a nursing home administrator resigns, the director of nursing can temporarily become the administrator of the nursing home for a period of thirty days, and it can be renewed for another thirty days. So that's the action that we took, because we have to have, we do have to have an acting administrator. What our, what our course will be in the longer term, you know, just remains under review. Right now, what we're trying to do is... What we're trying to do is get more revenue into the nursing home. We've been running, I think we talked at one of the meetings recently about the fact that we've been running at about a 70% occupancy. And right now, we've gotten that up to, to an 80% occupancy. Our goal is to get it to a 90% occupancy. At 80%, we break even. At 90%, we generate some profit that can be reinvested in the nursing home. One of the other things that we're doing that can also increase the nursing home census for beds occupied is hospice care. And we're working with Coastal Hospice. They believe that they could probably have eight to 10 beds occupied on a continuum. So we think that would be a very good idea. So our, our goal is to, to get our revenues up, to right-size our expenses, if you will. But at the same time, we don't want to see any, any sort of deterioration in the care given to the patients because our nursing home provides excellent care, and we want to maintain that care. But any other information you'd like from me, I'd be happy to get it to you. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Strasburg. Any other public comments?
My name is Lakeisha Ballard. I'm a Wacomiko County resident. My concern is, I am a Wacomiko taxpayer, but on the other side, I'm also a Wacomiko nursing home employer. I work there. My concern is that I have to come to these meetings to get information. Because we are at the nursing home, and we don't hear anything. We've been told that people are going to come out and talk to us, and nobody came. So nobody's coming out and explaining anything. So we're kind of like still in a frizzy, like the unknown, you know? And the question is, okay, if we're sold, you know, you kind of said, okay, we're not going to sell, we're not going to close. So that kind of put people at ease. But if you sell, there's people that's been there for 30 years. You know, what do you do with your sick time, your vacation time, your, you know, your pension, and so on and so forth? So that's still, because nobody's put us at ease, you know? So, and like you said, we have 80 people in. Hopefully, we get one or two people in today. But you, it's still not off the table, you know? So you can bust your behind and do everything that you're supposed to and continue your daily activity at work as normal, still continue to be at the best that you're supposed to because that's your job. But if the outcome is, you know, the fear is of the unknown, you know? And, you know, they say, well, change. Change is not always good. You know, yes, you can change some things, but if it's not for the good, then it's not worth the change, you know, or the hassle. Or, you know, the people in the community, they're, they're talking and, you know, and it's, it's just frustrating to be on the... And then we had the meeting that Wednesday, and then Bob Halver came, and he said, well, we need an executive, we need a management group. And my question is like, well, what is a management group? But we just kind of, you know, you say one thing, and then somebody else say something else. And it's, it's just frustrating because we have no idea where we're going. You know, nobody's talking. And like I said, when, I'm like, well, what is a management group? Does that, does that mean you're going to sell? When you say a management group? I understand the DMO can only be, the administrative, active administrator can only be there for a period of time. So does that mean just the fear of unknown? You know, so everybody's in, they're, they're just concerned, concerned. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strasburg, you certainly could. I believe that in the last discussion, the executive branch was going to schedule a meeting.
Yes, we were. Unfortunately, that meeting was supposed to have held last week, and instead of meeting with the nursing home employees, I was at home in bed with pneumonia. So I have to reschedule the meeting. One of the things in response, where's you? There you are. So, so one of the things in response to what you said is that I, I want to get to the nursing home, and I want to have a meeting with employees. But when I have that meeting with employees, I want to have as many answers as I can provide because if you, if you schedule a meeting like that and, and you haven't covered all the bases, you can actually create more anxiety than you relieve. So you'll have to forgive me. I understand your anxiety, and I'm going to do my best to get there next week. One of the things that I again will reiterate is that we're not going to close the nursing home at this point in time. What we're focused on is getting the nursing home back to what I'll call fiscal solency. And, and we're trying to make as many of those decisions as we can so that when we come out and meet with you, we can lay out exactly what we're going to be doing at the nursing home so that you have a clear vision of where we're going. So I do apologize. I meant to get there. You did not want what I had, so I stayed, I stayed out.
I know the public hearings aren't traditionally a question and answer, but the point was also made, Mr. Strasburg, about what is a management company? I think the clarification should be, if you could just make that very briefly, because I, I don't think it's...
Yeah, there, there are companies that specialize in managing nursing homes and over 55 developments, that type thing. It, it's very specialized. That environment is highly regulated. So one of the, one of the options, of course, is, is that if we can't source a director who we have confidence in, you could hire a management company to manage the facility, but the county would still have oversight, just like we do now. So it's a matter of, you know, do we collectively? And again, this isn't my decision. This is a decision for the executive and the county council, the electeds. But if we decide that, you know, we have a better outcome, possible outcome, better course of action by hiring a specialist in this arena, that may be the best route to take. We haven't made that decision yet.
One question. Our director retired at the end of the year. Has there been advertisements put out to hire a new director?
Not at this point in time, Joe. What I've been trying to do is with the lady who's in, in that seat now, I'm meeting with her at least on a weekly basis. And what I'm trying to do is take, is to take all those steps that will move us forward as quickly as we can so that we can get stabilized, if you will, and then search and make our decision as to what we find out there. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm comfortable that the day-to-day operation can be managed with the people who we have in place, but I'm staying very close to it as well.
I would guess also, Mr. Strasburg, that in order to bring someone in who would be extremely qualified, that individual would want to see that stability before they, before they answered, before they turn in their resume.
Yes, someone, yes, someone who, who is what I call worth of salt is, is, is going to want to see some stability and some plan moving forward. So I've really been focused on that as opposed to finding a replacement. If we've got people in-house who can keep it operating well for the time being, I just felt that was a better solution, better course of action.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Council comments?
Yes, I'd like to personally congratulate everybody that's been appointed on their positions. County does appreciate everything that you do. I also want to thank the public for coming here, voicing their concerns over the nursing home. Again, we are listening. We also understand that you know the concerns are not with the closing of the nursing home, but with the sale of the nursing home. And we are listening to your concerns. I also like to recognize Mr. John Sota, Town Manager of Fruitland, for being in the audience. I know you're here for the next work session, but thank you for being here. And it'd be nice to see you here more often to represent the town of Fruitland. Thank you.
Any other council comments?
Just, just a quick comment. The, I had the opportunity Saturday night to attend the British Invasion at the Civic Center.
That's a good show.
A pretty neat event that the, you know, the county puts on. And there's actually a couple of shows that they do. It's a dinner, dinner and show. But I just want to compliment the Civic Center staff on just an outstanding job. Their food preparation and their, their service. I mean, people were commenting on that regularly during the evening, just how well everything was conducted. So, you know, it's a nice, nice thing for our county, and, you know, look forward to the upcoming events that they're having as well.
Any other council comments?
Oh, briefly, I did get a couple of calls regarding the nursing home. And so I wanted to thank Dr. Mason, Ms. Purnell, and Ms. Mason, Ms. Bauer from, for, for coming. I don't know what, I don't know where that goes in the future, but it certainly feels like a lot of the staff and other folks who have reached out to me that, that they would like it to come to some sort of, expediently as possible, come to some better conclusion. So I look forward to seeing the county executive's office help make that happen. Also, I wanted to mention that we did, a couple of us did attend the memorial of Mike Pretel. He was a great community leader. And so it was really good to see, despite all the snow, it was good to see the tenants and the folks that were there. So...
Thank you. Any other comments?
Me too. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. Mason and Ms. Purnell for coming. As been said, we've been watching and thinking, of course, the, the county, that they maintain day-to-day operations of things in the county, we don't. We just hear what they give us. But again, we thank you for coming and supporting it. And like I said, we're watching very closely. If you have any questions, Ms. Katrina, you know you have my number. You can call, and whatever we have, we can get to you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Any other council comments? Entertained motion to adjourn from Wacomiko County Council so that we may convene as Wacomiko County Urban Services Commission.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
First item on the open work session is the Morris Mill Urban Service District Water Tower and associated items. If you could state for the public your name and title, company?
My name is Catherine McAllister. I'm an engineer with George Malison-Bier, and we were the engineer on the Morris Mill project.
John Sota, City Manager, Fruitland.
And Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration. This project was under me when I was Public Works Director. And although I came to the executive's office, I see it through to, I guess, where we are today.
Okay. We'll let you start, Weston.
Sure. So where we are is the, the water tower part of the Morris Mill Urban Service District was 100% grant-funded by the state. And if I say anything wrong, Catherine can jump in. Which is separate from the distribution line, which carried the water to the individual houses affected by the water contamination. The distribution line, if you have any comments, we'll be glad to touch on that. That's being, that was a low-interest loan from USDA Rural Development, and that is being paid back over time by the residents that have hooked into that. I think it's over a 30-year period, and it's paid on their tax bills. So this is to specifically talk about the tower. It is complete. It is full of City of Fruitland water. It is being operated and maintained by the City of Fruitland Public Works and their, their utility staff. And what we're trying to do here is transfer the ownership of the tower, which wasn't our name originally because we managed the, the project, to the City of Fruitland and all associated easements to get to that, that property. We have Catherine here, who did most of the legwork for, for the Morris Mill project. And honestly, if I had to manage it, you know, I wouldn't have been able to do anything else. And then Mr. Sota's here to talk City of Fruitland side of things, if you have any questions.
Okay. Questions from council?
Just one quick question, probably for any of you. Does the tower serve anything other than just the Morris Mill? Are you able to service other areas as well? Or have the capability or capacity to?
The tower was hooked into the city's entire distribution system. Their existing tower is located on the other side of town, and there were some concerns as far as bringing on the additional 270 residents without having some type of storage, you know, there in that area. So part of the project, and MDE, from an engineering standpoint, recognized that that storage was needed to take on those residents. In addition to, you know, the other areas that the city already knows are infill and that stuff, that might not be there today, but they've already dedicated.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, they've already, yeah. So that was also taken into account when that storage was looked at.
And also as a benefit, fire protection has increased throughout the city, but specifically for the Morris Mill Urban Service District now has fire protection as far as fire avoidance and adequate fire, water flow.
One, one other point on that is the installation of this tank allowed Fruitland to take their existing tank offline and refurbish it so it's in a much better case. So there, there was, there was that indirect benefit as well.
In this provision for this transfer, is there any, anything in here? We have other neighborhoods close by that possibly in the future may need water services. Are any provisions in here where we can tap into this water tower and, and use it, be the fact that it's already in our name, but we have the advantage of using it at a later date?
Well, we, we have, we have an interconnect on division as far as City Salisbury, if there's a need for water on their side. Or we've used it, I think it came online in 2012. We've had one occasion to use it. But as far as the county goes, I don't know the infrastructure wise as far as tapping into it.
Yeah, that would, again, you'd have to look at where and pressures and do some testing. But I do believe...
I mean, it's not, it's not at capacity, is it?
No.
Okay.
No, they are not at capacity.
What I'm saying is if we have another issue like we had at Morris Mill...
Correct.
Would we be able, is there any provision in this agreement where we would be able to use this water tower?
So, so we would have a future urban service agreement with the City of Fruitland to make that work. Years ago, on separate projects, the county helped, I think they took over the debt, if not provided the financing for upgrades to water and sewer treatment systems in the City of Fruitland. So we have reserved capacity in their system, water and wastewater, that we could use. But we would have, that would be a separate conversation. It wouldn't be tied to a specific water tower. It would just be extending...
Perhaps an MOU?
Yeah. Yeah.
Which we don't, there isn't one that exists, but maybe that's something we could look into.
Yeah, so as Public Works works on the water and sewer master plan, and we identify areas, which it seems to be the theme, if there's any surround areas near, nearby to the corporate limits of Fruitland that could use water and/or sewer, we would need to start discussions with them. And hopefully, they'd be willing to entertain that, given our great working relationship with this type of infrastructure in the past.
How many residents? I heard you mentioned 270. How many are tied into the tower and the water line currently?
All of them.
How many?
I think the final number was like 268 or 269.
That's 270.
Yeah. It's, it's fluctuated a bit. I forget, the home builder, I think it's Davis, has built a home or two. We've had, we've had a few homes trickle in, and what that does is for each additional house that's in that service area that connects, the annual payment is split among the people that are connected. So every time a house gets added, their payment goes down incrementally based on...
So the, the new people hooking up, is that prorated to pay for the previous cost?
That, I don't, no, I don't think so. I, I think they just pick up where the, where the payment is at the time.
So the, the original homeowners are carrying the burden?
Yeah, so when it was connected, USDA required the rate structure to show that it, the loan could be paid.
Yeah.
So when it was connected with the 260-plus homes, the county had to show that collecting X dollars, you know, paid the loan, whatever term, monthly or whatever needed to be paid. So as more get connected, unfortunately, no, they're not paying back, but they will pay forward.
Right. Okay. You understood what I'm saying, right?
Yeah, we understand.
So how, how do we know who is going to need water service in that area? And is there a requirement that anybody close by... there a requirement that anybody close by has to hook up?
The, the health department usually makes that determination. They're the ones that approve subject systems, installation of wells, trying to keep the wells away from subject systems, having set distances and all of that. So, yeah, they're, they're the ones, we, we've had, and in the course of this project, we'd have a schedule of who, what houses we are going to connect, but wells would fail in that time, and we would have to reprioritize who's getting hooked to the line. So as a well fails in this area, the health department gets involved, and then they determine, okay, is it, should they be hooked up? Now, we may have citizens reach out that are nearby, and we'll have to figure out, okay, how do we extend the line with, you know, the blessing of the City of Fruitland to, to service them as well? Because it will be the billing, the water billing, and the maintenance is all handled by the City of Fruitland. So we, we need their buy-in.
And, and it goes hand in hand with what Councilwoman Holloway was asking about people needing it in the future.
The current, like, just to answer that also, the way that Urban Service District was developed was at the very beginning, MDE and EPA came in and did a big study on that contamination. And they tried to figure out how the groundwater was flowing. And hopefully, the way the study ended is the groundwater is flowing towards the City of Salisbury, who's already on the city's services. So we were able to designate the area that got served by the actual Morris Mill project.
Who initiated that study?
Like, how did it begin?
Right.
Residents, one resident found it in his well.
So he did a test on his own?
Started testing, and it became pretty widespread. So then, that's when MDE comes in.
I know I heard people in that area talking to me about doing their own self-test, hiring the company to do it, and what the cost was. So it is a concern.
Yeah, there, there were some people who, who resisted hooking up. They didn't want an additional water bill added to their, their list of bills. But as these other wells stop pulling, while it is generally moving towards Salisbury, if you have a person pulling from a well, and all these other wells have stopped, that contaminant or a part of that contaminant could move directly to their well. So again, it was the Health Department helping make that determination. And early on, MDE and the federal government with the EPA stepping in.
What was that contaminant, and where did it come from?
We're going to the transfer.
Yeah, tread chloroethylene.
Yeah, yeah, it's easy.
What's the cause?
They're not sure. It comes in like directly.
Yeah, it's an industrial solvent. But again, yeah, what we're, what we're trying to bring before you today is the transfer of the water tower and the access to the property and the easement to get to that water tower to the city, so that it's fully in their ownership, and we can take it off our insurance. And so there's, there's a benefit there as well.
Do we need a motion to that?
That's what I was going to ask. What was the benefit? What was the reason for the county wanting to transfer it? That's what I.
Well, it's, it was, so, so in the original agreements, it was always intended to go to the City of Fruitland, similar to the grant that the county's getting to bring water out to the airport. That is City of Salisbury water that is running out there. So ultimately, we would want them to maintain that pipe because we don't, we don't have the staff to maintain that. If something were to happen to the tower and we had to fix it, we would have to find a professional entity to do that for us because we lack that capacity. So again, it's filled with City of Fruitland water.
Right now, we're paying insurance on it.
Yes. Yeah, we, we, yeah, we wanted to make sure that should something happen while it's in our name, we're, we're covered. So we did put that in insurance.
And I was leading up to that question, sorry it took so long, but I was just wondering why, if it was already in the county's name, and we have an urban service agreement, why do we have to give up ownership of it?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Again, we don't have the staff to, to maintain it. We have no water, we have no wells to fill it up. This is, this is City of Fruitland water. And yeah, again, we don't have a water billing system in place.
The maintenance associated with towers is a lot higher than those associated typically with distribution mains. Like, the city has to currently reserve funds because in five years, they probably have to pay that. So you guys would, I guess, have to develop the structure, or if you weren't leaning on the city, or some group, you know what I mean? The maintenance associated with towers, it's big ticket items that come up. And when they come up, a lot of times it becomes a problem.
And I've mentioned this 100 times, the county's going to have to eventually get in the water and sewer business.
Well, I mean, right now, as an urban service district, we don't, we're kind of a contractor. We don't own the facilities and all that sort of stuff, except I guess this water tower, you know, we, we contract with City of Salisbury and things like that for our urban service districts. Is that right? So this is essentially kind of moving in that direction, too, is saying, hey, this is Fruitland's, that, that we're going to contract with them.
Sure. So, so the, the people impacted were not corporate, in the corporate limits of Fruitland, so that they were under our jurisdiction, you know, 100%. So we were the pass-through. We, and this is still part of the pass-through. When the citizens in this urban service district have paid off the distribution pipe, we will do the same thing, hand that over. But it's going to be, even though Fruitland's maintaining it now, and we have an MOU in that regard, or, or water and sewer agreement, it's in our name until it's paid off. And then we'll, we'll transfer it at that point, 20-some years later.
The more stuff we can move.
We don't own any water towers now, and we don't want one.
I'm not saying we don't want any.
At, at the moment, at the moment, we're not in the business.
Yeah, this project extended City of Fruitland's service. I, I, we hear fully what, what Councilman Dodd and others are saying, in that, you know, we're, we have other places in the county that, that need it. The cheapest course of action is to take existing utilities that are set up and extend it out to those locations. But we're, Public Works is looking into that.
Mr. Cannon?
Other question.
Just a, a comment on, in line with Mr. Holloway's question. About 15 or 20 years ago, I think the county provided financing, Mr. Young just referred to it, to Fruitland for their infrastructure. And I think as part of that agreement, Fruitland gave the county rights to a certain gallonage from their system.
200,000 gallons.
200,000, and that is for sewer.
Sewer.
That was for E and R upgrade, E and R upgrade in 2003.
Any other questions? Right, this will come before, so I assume it's a resolution?
It actually requires a public hearing, so we can have that on February the 5th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. All right, sounds good. All right, thank you very much.
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a dollar in my pocket I was going to give to somebody.
Pretty good price.
Bill McCain will take it.
Give it to Nancy Pelosi.
Hey, John, we can amend that amount, you know. We can boost that amount up.
It's in an agreement.
John, thank you.
Entertained motion to adjourn as the Wycomica County Urban Services Commission, so we may reconvene as Wycomica County Council. Second, those in favor?
Aye.
We now reconvene as the Wycomica County Council. First item on the open work session is the capital improvements plan 2020, 2024. General Services is the first department that we have here.
Mr. President, I have a handout from the internal auditors regarding the CIP for General Services. I'd like to pass out.
All right.
Also have something to, Mr. President.
All right.
Good morning, Peyton.
Okay, this is one where it's stated differently. Okay, same body.
This is the folder, the projects for the CIP.
You can state your name for public and your position.
Thanks, Peyton Matthews. I'm General Services Supervisor for the county.
Congratulations, Peyton. I think it's the first time we've had a chance to talk to you long enough.
I think once here last year.
Oh, you're, okay, sorry about that.
He was, he was fresh then.
Yeah, I was real fresh.
John, I don't remember either. We're getting old.
I would like to start.
We can start right on the top page and go through. The first item is a request for funding to work on the restrooms at the University of Maryland Extension Office presently. The building was built in the 60s. There are small bathrooms. There's no handicap accessibility. I have been in contact with somebody from the University of Maryland, don't call his name right in the moment, who has provided a set of plans to reconfigure the restroom area at that building. It's going to require the floor to be pretty much torn up, and we start over in a square room. But there is enough room to get male and female handicap restrooms at the facility.
Is that off the mannequin roof?
Yes. It's presently, we're putting a new roof on that building.
But that's not public access to those restrooms?
There's public access now, yes, but they're not ADA compliant. And they have a wide variety of people in that building at all times, and they've expressed a need.
They have?
Yes. Any questions on that? The next item on my agenda concerns the restrooms on this floor that are presently in the council area. They're two small restrooms, as everyone here is aware of. The only other handicap available restrooms in this building are in the basement. During night meetings, they're hard to access. And what we would like to do is take those two restrooms and the hallway that leads to them, and configure them into a unisex handicap restroom.
On the first floor?
No, right here on the third floor, right, right behind you. Plumbing, the plumbing is there, the, the infrastructure is there. We would just have to reconfigure things to make it usable. Yes, sir.
Is the reconfiguration, is that to make it wheelchair accessible?
Yes.
As they are right now, they're just too small.
Yes.
They're very small.
But they're very small, but we can take the hallway and those two restrooms and get a handicap accessible ADA compliant restroom on this floor.
I see you've got 15,000 for design study and planning.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that formed out to somebody else?
Not, yeah, it will be, yes. It will be an engineering study to make sure that we're tying everything in the way it needs to be tied in, and to make sure we've located everything under the floor. Because there is, I don't know if you've noticed, but there are places in the floor where you'll see black rubber strips. There are actual chases with various systems running in there. So we have to make sure we avoid all that and don't cause more problems than we solve.
Why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you do this work with the current two restrooms that are already on this floor?
Not big enough.
Can't you just expand the doorways and change the stuffs?
You have to have a five-foot turning circle around the fixtures, and there's just not enough room in there to do it.
Because you're going to have to close this area off.
We would have to close those two restrooms off while construction is underway, yes, sir.
There you go, so often.
It's just, you know, it's just, just a thought to make it more accessible to the public. The next item is replacing the hot water circulation pumps in this building. They're original to the building. And you gentlemen may not realize is we pump hot and cold water through this building year-round to maintain a constant temperature of the water throughout the facility so that we can control the temperature. We have two pumps in the basement to take care of this. As I said, they are original to the building. If we lose one, the other one won't be far behind, and we want to get them taken care of before we have a problem. Next item is also for this building, is roof replacement. What we're proposing is to do the engineering study this year, with replacement taking place in fiscal year 21. We're not sure, or I'm not sure how long the roof has been on this building, but it is the third layer of roofing that's up there. So we're proposing to take everything down to the structural deck and start over with a more modern system. Right now, it's a roll roofing system with tar joints, and it has started to delaminate from the layer below it.
Is it leaking yet?
It's not leaking yet, no. But there are bubbles, for lack of a better term, there are bubbles up there everywhere.
It's a flat roof?
It's a flat roof. It does have structural pitch to direct the water, but it's basically a flat roof, yes.
You just can't put more tar and gravel on top of it.
There's three layers on there right now.
There's three layers. So you have to remove those?
Well, you should, because anything you put on top of it now is just going to continue the situation we've got of delamination.
And added weight.
And added weight. So, you know, we're at the point now where we've got to take it down to the structural deck and start over, which is the way to do it. You know, you, you get rid of a lot of weight, and you can put a much better product on there now than what was put on the last time. Technology's just advanced with these membranes, and it's, it's fast and easy now.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, it could be a membrane?
Yes, it would be a membrane, yes.
Does code require a certain amount of roofs where you, like you say, there's three, that you, can you see a code where it tells you to stop at three or four?
In residential, I know it's two. Common sense tells me three's too many, and four would be just a waste of money. Now, right now, we're fighting the problem of delamination between the layers. If we pop the bubbles and put another layer on there, it's just going to exacerbate it, and we're spending good money after bad.
Yeah, I see where it's needed.
Weston, what part does the city play in cost of these projects?
So the government office building, all the projects, I believe all the projects listed here, the city has a portion of the payment, if it's specifically for this building. I think the one that, the underground fuel tank is, is a little more complicated. But for, for this building, we, we run these projects by the city. They should be putting 50% of the estimated cost in their budgets as well.
And, and that was my question. So I just saw a figure of 300,000. So is that half of their share?
For, for this building, yeah, it would be, in, in this first phase, what's that, 1750, and then, or 17,500, and then 150,000 would be their share, 150,000 would be our share for the roof.
Sort of splitting it?
Yes.
Or supposedly.
Yeah. So, so what you'll see in the CIP is there'll be statements that, project is pending, City of Salisbury funding for their agreed-upon portion. So if, if something happens with their budget and they're not able to fund it, we may have to delay one of these projects further. But we're trying to keep communication open there so that they know what we need for this building, since, since we're the ones managing it. And, you know, we want to make sure, like with the roof, we're handling these things in a timely manner so that we don't have leaks and associated damages with that.
We're seeing that term PEGO a lot.
The next project would be to replace the restroom partitions in the women's restrooms throughout this building. They're somewhat of a maintenance nightmare. They're steel. They tend to corrode, not as bad as men's restrooms, but they do have a maintenance issue. And what we'd like to do is replace them with composite material and stainless steel hardware, and they'd be done and over with. I think most of the new facilities you go in, restaurants and so forth, if you notice the partitions, they are a plastic material. And this, of course, basically maintenance-free, and that's what we're looking for.
One correction, we, we had decided to do both. So what's in the CIP is, you know, double the amount?
We had money for the men's in this year, so I think we can just go to transfer it through. Next project is replacement of carpet next door in the Circuit Court Building. Carpet's about 15 years old. It has seen its best day. We're going to do all four courtrooms and the, basically the whole third floor, but just the courtrooms on the fourth floor. We're looking at options for material, but right now, the leading candidate is a Tandis Centiva product, which is in the hallway up here. It's very durable, long-lasting. It is a little more expensive than regular carpet, but we think the longevity of it will pay for itself.
That's not the same carpet as the Civic Center, is it?
I believe it is, yes.
I've saw that. It's a nice carpeting.
You can, you can pull out sections of it to replace it.
And we've also, I've also included in that item, something that hasn't been done in that building, is annual cleaning of the carpet, which will also extend the life of it.
Absolutely. Would that be contracted out, or do we have people to do that?
Don't know yet. The manufacturer recommends a specific type of machine be used. The manufacturer recommends a specific type of machine be used on it. They do have that equipment at the Civic Center, so I don't know whether it would be a shared piece of equipment that we could work a deal on or whether we would just go ahead and purchase one and have my crew take care of it. Final thing is replacing the HVAC chiller at the old courthouse. This unit is twenty, somewhere between twenty and twenty-five years old and again, that takes care of most of that building and it's better to fix that, replace it now than it is going to break down in August when we can't cool the building.
We had that problem here in this building.
Couple of years ago.
Couldn't open the windows.
Any questions from anyone? Are there are other projects on here that, outside of what Mr. Matthews has highlighted for us if council has questions in reference to those?
It's curious, it says the building next door, the old courthouse, I was in there the other day and it was, well, my first thought was, I hope this is safe for people to walk through. It does not look good in there. It looks great on the outside, but what's the plans for the future of the old courthouse?
I guess I don't understand what you're referring to.
You can walk through the hallways, it looks like part of the ceiling is going to, parts of the paint's chipping, falling down, there's, it's quite, I didn't expect it to look that bad, but I went and goes to Karen Lemon.
I'm in the process, I've only been in this position about a year and I'm still finding things and working through things. I know there are issues, maintenance, general maintenance issues over there that need to be addressed. That would be worked into my operating budget as opposed to a capital improvement. Agreed, there are things over there that need to be done. The other thing that you need to realize is it is an old building, it has been upgraded several times for technology. Those walls are solid brick with plaster over the walls and generally, we're talking a twelve-inch thick wall, so everything has to be done on the surface. There are probably things we can do to hide some of that stuff, but as far as the building, the integrity of the building, it was a bomb shelter at one time, so it's, it's not going anywhere. I agree with you, there are things that need to be done to improve the appearance and we will chip away at those things over the next couple of years and make the facility more appealing.
I thought we just invested in a renovation.
Well, what I was going to say is prior to PATE, one of the things we did was we wanted to stop the recurrent rainfall flooding, so if you look, when we redid the front, we redid the bell tower, we put on a brand-new, I think it's synthetic slate roof. So we wanted to stop the issues from becoming insurmountable, so we've sealed the outside, so it looks good from the outside. Now it's inside, which a lot of those from the painting, and I've noticed that, like on the stairwell up to, I guess, what is it, room five, courtroom five, there's major paint peeling off the walls, but that'll be handled in general services.
Right in the budget.
Yeah, the operational, operational budget.
Hey, do you think there's any way, do we have anyone on staff or within the county that can seriously look into the historical status of the old courthouse and try to get some grant funding through historical grants? There are, there are groups in this community that could possibly help us with that.
I think it would depend on what we wanted to do. Most of the time, that money is designated for exterior improvement. I know with residential historic structures, they don't care what you do inside, when they make, when they give you a grant, that it's mostly to keep it historically accurate on the exterior. But I can, I can look into that and find out what's available.
I think it's a good idea, Justin.
I think Ms. Carter at Planning and Engineering is familiar with grants and applications.
She is, yeah, okay.
I will speak with her and see what we can do.
The only other thing I had on the hurdle basement floor, I guess we have evaluated this enough to know that it's, it's time to reinvest in this building as opposed to maybe move, move everyone out of there and find a new location for the health, the downtown health department? Because I don't, you know, we're going to spend...
Yeah, so we're still in the process, because we have funds, we're proposing more funds to try to ultimately find a fix for what's happening in the basement. We met with some consultants and I believe the next course of action is we're going to open up portions of the floor now that nobody's in the basement portion of that building and look at what, what happens once we, once we open that up. Everything we see tidal, tidal influence, so the rising and falling of the tide is affecting not just that building, but any of the buildings along Main Street that have basements and are as deep as this building is into the ground. So, we're going to see, we're going to try a few fixes to see how, how does it hold with that tidal effect and, but to the larger stance of, you know, do they, do they, do we abandon the building or do we, you know, try to stay? I think we're trying to fix it because even if we were to sell it, we, we need a solution to the basement in some form. So, it, we need to fix the basement. If we can fix it, then it's usable again and we can move people back in. So we're still in that process, we don't have a answer yet, it's, it's quite the challenge.
We really need to determine where the water's actually entering. We believe it's in the rear of the structure, but it appears throughout the basement. So, just as an example, back in the summer when the city was doing work down by the state's attorney's office, they hit a sewer line and repaired it. But to get to the sewer line, which was thirty-two, thirty-four inches below grade, they dug down and in about twenty-eight inches below grade, clean water started coming in the hole. So that's where the water table is. So that's what we're fighting at the basement over there is tidal influence and those guys made the comment that we know when tide's coming in.
Yeah, you know, I was just wondering, I didn't know if there would be, you know, a commercial real estate company in Salisbury area, Sprive Van Ness or whoever it might be, that could look at all of the dynamics of where our circumstances are and say, oh, you're going to invest three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in this basement? You know, with that type of money, you could probably do a quick fix and we know what the commercial industry is willing to accept. Someone may want to purchase that building with that basement and also figure out a way for us to, to make a move.
Sure.
I really would like to think about that. I think it would even, even another location would probably better suit the health department and downtown Main Street.
It would alleviate paying all that money for parking over here.
Exactly. No, and that is something we are considering, but we want to see if we can fix it, if we can fix it, you know, cheap.
Hard to sell a building that's got a bad problem.
And what you're giving us here is you're not fixing it cheap, you know?
No, it will not be cheap.
Yeah.
Be right up front with you, it will not be cheap.
It would be very interesting to know if there's a commercial realtor that might say, here's, here's our obligation, here's some options that you might have.
Sure. We would be open to that, so if they want to reach out.
How long will it take to find an answer? Because we've been talking about this for several months.
Probably a year.
It took us a while to get the people out of the basement to where we'd have full access, so.
Now they're all out of the basement?
They're all out of the basement, they're at the ES-Adkins right now.
So we're going to have to rent that facility for another year?
We were renting a part of it for the, I think their dental program and their WIC program, so they were, they already had a small footprint there, but yet you're correct, if we don't have a physical place to move them, whether it's this basement or another location that we own, we will have to pay rent for the foreseeable future.
I think it should be a high priority.
It's going to be hard to, once we get some areas open, we need to watch them for a while. We really need to get a gauge on what's happening rather than just say, okay, we're going to do this. We really need to take a look. We've discussed this many times and I think we're, staff is comfortable with the fact that we're going to get some areas opened up, we're going to find out as close as we can where the water's coming in, then we'll consult with an expert to say, okay, what can we do? If the expert says you're out of luck, then we go to Plan B.
So, has there ever been any consideration, and I know you would probably have to rewire the whole building, just banning the basement and filling it in? I mean, apparently this basement situation's been going on for a number of years, it probably went on when Pennies was in the building years ago, but, and I'm sure there's infrastructure in that building, wiring, whatever, that would have to be, but maybe it would be advantageous to us just abandon the basement, fill it in, rewire the building.
One of the things that we noticed during the walkthrough down there was when the floors were added to that building, structural steel columns were, go all the way to the basement and put on twelve-by-twelve foot footers. The water may have taken that opportunity to come in around the footer. Previously, the floor had not been violated, it was a slab. But once that floor got violated with those spread footer pads, that could have been the opportunity that the water needed to start showing up.
Sure. But, but to your point, that is a consideration, is can we, can we abandon the basement altogether, fill it in somehow? But it comes back to how do we, we need to figure out how to stop the water because if we...
Well, if it's a tidal issue and you get rid of, and you don't use a basement, you fill it in, it's not going to be a tidal issue unless the tide comes up eight foot higher than it's been coming up, so.
We would still have to keep it out of the foundation somehow or it would come under the foundation and still...
Well, you're not, you're not going to keep it out of the foundation if it's outside coming in, so.
That steel will start to deteriorate.
Well, it's in the concrete, but what I'm going with that is it came in around the perimeter of the pad, that's, that's what it appears anyway, because nowhere where these pads are shows any delamination of the floor. So that's why we're thinking, and the delamination occurs throughout the whole basement floor, most prominently in the back and in the front where there are services coming in. But around each one of these pads, we see delamination of the floor, so.
All right, gentlemen, well, we appreciate you taking the time. I think the government's greatest fault is they always fall victim to deferred maintenance, you know? And Larry had mentioned, there's a lot of PEGO in here, but I think certainly you do have to make that investment and we appreciate what you're, what you're doing.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work.
Next work session agenda, everybody's ready.
He got the memo from...
We have recreation parks and tourism.
You're the only one between us and lunch, sorry.
Well, it's your questions and my stomach growling, so take your pick.
Guys, we were way ahead of schedule anyway, I think.
No, we never say that.
Are we or not?
There's no schedule.
Yeah, we are. Bill, we're an hour ahead of schedule.
Two hours. No meeting should extend two hours.
I agree, I agree. I have an internal clock. I have an internal clock, after two hours, I really start to fade out. If you could state your names for the, for the public and then we will begin.
Steve Miller, Director, County Recreation Parks and Tourism.
Pam Olin, Deputy Director.
Great. There's a lot going on.
Yeah, Mr. President and council members, thank you for having us again this morning. For our CIP for FY twenty is, in terms of requests from the county at this moment, what we've submitted is approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars that we'd be asking from the county. About half of that would be matching funds for projects where we get state grants or different types of grants. And then the other half of that would be for a retro light project, which we'd be happy to talk about, but converting some of our county-owned facilities, converting the lights to LEDs. So, the other potential number that is to be determined, there's a Civic Center project for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we would need to determine whether we'd be asking the county to fund that or if that would come out of the Civic Center restoration. So that's to be determined, but we'd be happy to go line by line or if there's specific questions or issues, we could tackle it either way.
I don't see a reason to go line by line.
No, I, yeah, I think that, yeah, you have quite a few items on here, just, are there any questions in particular that council members have in reference to any of the, what do you have, about fifteen projects here?
Yes, approximately.
Elevator, Flanders, Pirates Wharf, tennis and basketball court, the playground equipment, Harmon Field, Cedar Hill Marina. Yeah, on Cedar Hill, I know there's been talk of tiny cabins there, I mean, is this part of it or is that still in the conceptual stage?
This Cedar Hill is actually the, the marina itself and it's, other than about eleven thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty, the rest of it is state-funded. We can get ninety-nine thousand dollars a year from them for restoration and so we believe based on linear footage and previous bidding that if we did a phase in twenty twenty for about a hundred and ten thousand, again, eleven thousand dollars coming from county and then ninety-nine thousand twenty twenty-one, this would basically renovate the existing marina, bulkheadings and piers and we wouldn't need any funding for that part of the marina for another five, at least five years beyond. So that's why this has been, if you look back at CIPs, this has been kind of an ongoing project and then before that, we did Nanticoke. So we have been slowly taking section by section of the marina and replacing the bulkheadings in those sections.
Yeah, in terms of the cabins, we have money in last year's CIP, the first step was that, was to renovate the restrooms, which we're in the process of doing, and then when that's complete, we're going to see how much money's left over to, to look at the cabin situation, so.
Sounds good. Any, any other questions from anyone there? Let me go back to the Cedar Hill, then we have the Boiler Replacement, Purdue Stadium, stadium fire pump, fire suppression, the HSPAC lighting for fields seven and eight, dugout bleacher replacement, retro lighting and Roaring Point parking expansion. Any questions that anyone might have? Is there anything that you want to expound on?
No, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but no, nothing in particular.
The only question I had was, and it's not really a big point, but I was confused on the Pirates Wharf where you had noted that for design, study and planning, that there was a hundred thousand appropriated in fiscal year nineteen, but I only saw that as fifty thousand appropriated for design, study and planning for nineteen. I mean, for the, from the, yes, from the nineteen, fiscal year nineteen.
Well, this was actually, this was created before all of these budget amendments and all that kind of stuff, so that may be in the wrong, a hundred thousand dollars in total was appropriated in fiscal nineteen to start the process. That was back at the beginning of the budget year and then since then, we've now accepted the state grant, or the federal grant and actually today, you guys moved the two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So, the prior year appropriation column was created prior to all of these changes, so I think that's why that column is actually highlighted because it's one of those ones that was kind of in flux. So, a total of a hundred thousand, it might be in the wrong bucket, but it was a hundred thousand dollars in total that was a pre, was the first appropriate.
There was fifty thousand for design and a hundred thousand for construction, so it's a total of a hundred and fifty. I, I'm not worried about it.
Yeah, it, we, all we did was, for fiscal nineteen was a hundred, though.
Yeah, if I could make one point too, with regards to the Purdue Stadium project, so in our twenty-year lease agreement, there are certain building systems, when they pass the agreed-upon lifecycle, it becomes the county's responsibility. So what we've put in here is if we were to take the approach to completely replace those systems, some of them are still in decent shape, so we could, depending on how, what the will of the council is and the administration, if the time comes where we take the responsibility, we wouldn't have to replace those. If there's an issue, it'd be our responsibility to fix, so we could take a maintenance approach if we wanted to or we could look to replace it and then put it to the team. So, those decisions don't need to be made for this fiscal year, but I wanted to just point that out because at some point, we'll need to decide how to approach that, so.
Any other questions? All right, that's everything we have here, we appreciate you guys coming in and...
Thank you very much.
We're the next item on the agenda.
Oh, you're on the edge?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll get out of the hot seat.
All right, thanks.
I'll let him stay.
Out of the hot seat.
I'll let him stay.
Next item on the agenda is the Amendment to Capital Improvement Plan two thousand nineteen twenty-three Pirates Wharf Master Plan. Steve?
Yes, sir. So, we applied and received a grant in the amount of twenty-nine hundred... So we applied and received a grant in the amount of twenty-nine hundred thirty-four dollars from Lowry from Shore Heritage, LESH. And the purpose of that grant was for us to find a consultant to help us, uh, do the research and to develop the story is what we're gonna call it for Pirates Wharf. So how did they get its name, what happened at the property? And we feel like, uh, that information, one, we don't have the in-house expertise nor the time to, to do that research. That's very extensive, um, but we feel with that research, what we can do is, you know, once a trail system is developed there, like Pemberton Park, we could have interpretive signage along the trails to help, in addition to the nature elements and, and public recreation, just to tie in history into the development of the park. So, um, we feel like with that, um, tying that history element in, it could be an opportunity for tourism or heritage tourism. And, uh, LESH felt the same way, so they, they awarded us this grant to be able to hire a consultant, which, uh, we think would enhance the park, um, and add that history element. So that's, that's what the grant is for, it's a matching grant. Um, we're not asking for additional funds, the funds that were transferred earlier in the meeting are sufficient to cover that, so we're, we don't need additional funds. But, uh, we'd like to accept this and move forward.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Josh, any question?
Should we?
Do you have a question?
No, I was gonna say, let's do it.
What is a interpretive signage plan, an interpretive signage?
So interpretive signage, so if you go out to Pemberton Park, uh, when you come to those big storyboards where they'll either show pictures or, or tell a, a story of a particular park, uh, it's referred to as interpretive signage, so it's giving...
Tell it history and so forth.
Yeah, it's giving interpretation of what, what it is that you're looking at or the spot why it's significant. So, uh, what we'd envision is, um, there's a story to be told there and, and we're still trying to determine what that is. But, uh, along the trails that we would have these storyboards that people could stop and, and learn and you could do tours and different things of that nature, so.
They're at all historic places.
Yeah, the reason I ask that is because, um, on part of the, I guess, the grant, except, uh, grant, um, application, uh, it was asked, um, to explain how you will plan on, um, measuring and tracking the success of the project. And that was, the response to that was to incorporate interpretive signage plans. And I wasn't sure how that was going to in itself specifically track...